All right, here we go. We'll now call to order City of Salina Planning Commission meeting for August 4th, 2020. Good afternoon, everybody.
As far as our roll call, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, we have had during the hiatus where we were not meeting regularly, we had Commission Member Jackson, Joan Jackson, resigned, and her term was going to end at the end of August. And Commissioner Eisenhower also resigned from the Commission. I believe her term was also going to end at the end of August. So we have seven current members, all seven of which are here in attendance today.
Thank you.
And as far as the Kansas Open Meetings Act, we have posted the packet and we have provided the required notice for today's meeting. In the case of a replat or subdivision plat, we send notice to owners of abutting property. And so that's what we did in this case, was send a letter notification to property owners that own property abutting the replat area, so that that notice has been provided.
Okay. Thank you very much. I guess we're on to approval of minutes?
I move we approve the meeting minutes.
It's been motioned and seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. On to new business.
I want to commend Margie for the -- I thought that the minutes were for our new surroundings over there at the Tony's Pizza Event Center, that it was a bit of a challenge, the whole setup over there. But as far as the sound system and everything, I think the quality of the sound system and everything worked well over there, but it's nice to be back to our regular setting.
Agreed.
And with the 20 pages of minutes there, I thought, Margie, you did a really good job of capturing what happened at that meeting, so. We have no, what we would call, public hearing or quasi judicial matters or legislative matters, so that would bring us to administrative items. And the administrative item we have for you this evening is a replat application. It's been filed by Jeff Thompson on behalf of FFC Global Supply Chain Incorporated, requesting a replat of their Tony's Pizza, Shwan's corporate campus. And Dustin has on the screen there, the shaded request area is the corporate campus for Tony's Pizza and Shwan's. And the exception's not included. This is a property that's owned by UniFirst Corporation. These are two parcels that are occupied by buildings that are owned by the Salina Airport Authority. So those, that would be this property here, this here, and this building here are not included in the proposed corporate campus. And so we're talking about, this is Schilling Road on the north, Centennial Road on the east. Some of you may or not know, about four years ago, we changed the street name that was formerly Bailey Road, that came off of Centennial, and the Salina Airport was finding that out-of-town travelers were having difficulty locating the airport terminal, which was addressed off of Arnold, but you got to it primarily from Bailey. So then this section here was changed from Bailey Road to Arnold Avenue. And so occasionally, you may find, you even have drawings in the packet that label it as Bailey Road, but we wanted to clarify that that name had been changed. So when we refer to being bordered by Arnold Avenue, we're talking about here and along there. So Dustin, there's this drawing in there. You should go to that. So this is just kind of an overview of why we're here and the purpose of the replat that's before you. But you can see, first of all, in 1965, when the federal government was getting ready to turn the Schilling Air Force Base over to the city, they did what they called the Schilling Subdivision Plat, which was essentially a map of the area. But it had lots on it with three sides. It had street right-ofways that were, that had gaps in them. There were a number of things that you wouldn't see on a comprehensive plat today. So in 1997, as part of upgrades to the infrastructure out in the airport area, the Salina Airport Authority worked to replat the properties throughout the airport area, and they broke it down into multiple plats. And in our staff report, we talk about the Schilling subdivision had a number of deficiencies, lack of identifiable or dedicated right-ofway gaps, properties that only had three sides to them, unclear utility and drainage easements. And so there were infrastructure improvements that were going to be made, but the replat helped decide which streets were public and which were private. And so this particular area was divided into, it had, Schilling Number Five had 468 acres, and it was divided into 124 lots and had 15 separate blocks. And so this, this is the Block 12, and you can see there's all these individual lots that were platted back at that time. And so we've kind of highlighted for you some of the changes that were made. And two of the changes that affect this, originally Jumper Road went through here as a public street, and Scanlon Avenue went all the way through up to Schilling Road as a public street. And Scanlon Avenue was terminated here, and Jumper Road was eliminated as a public street here. And then this section of Jumper was retained. And so the Planning Commission approved this replat and this layout in 1998 in August. And so this is Block 12. That's the site of the Tony's Pizza manufacturing facility. As we noted, it's bordered by public streets on all four sides. And we had a street name change in 2016. So now we have an application submitted with plat drawing that proposes to replat the land holdings there into a single platted lot to create a corporate campus. And so this area within the replat contains 77 acres, and is currently subdivided into 18 different lots and bisected by several public streets and public utility easements. So the purpose of the replat is to eliminate a lot of the internal lot lines and to merge the land holdings into a single lot and block. And some of the most extensive work is to eliminate some internal utility lines and utility easements and clean some of those up. And then the part of the plan is that this section of Scanlon Avenue here that extends north would be completely vacated as a public street and revert to private ownership. The other part of this plan that we'll discuss a little bit later is there's a plan to, there's quite a bit of stormwater runoff that comes off the runway to the west, and presently it kind of goes right down Jumper Avenue through the campus. And as part of this project, they're proposing to divert the water to a point here, put it into an underground box, and take it around the campus. And then we'll, a little later, show you some proposed detention ponds that are across the street on this property here. But those are some of the purposes of the replat. And city staff and area utility providers have carefully reviewed this layout to look at utility services, drainage, and proposed easement and right-ofway dedications. So what we're proposing to do is take 18 individual lots, merge them into one lot with four public street frontages, and obviously at 77 acres, the lot conforms with all lot size and frontage requirements. As far as street access, there would be access on all four sides. One thing we wanted to note is that presently, just a matter of historic record, the physical street address out here for the Tony's Pizza manufacturing facility is 3019 Scanlon Avenue. Well, if this replat is approved, Scanlon Avenue won't exist at all through here, so we'd be working with Tony's Pizza to readdress the facility. Schilling and Centennial are arterial streets, and there was historically restricted access dedicated along these frontages, except for these approved openings. And so that would be retained as part of the replat. So the way that restricted access works is that you can only have access to your property through the openings that are approved as part of the plat. And if you want to create additional openings, then you have to request a break in restricted access. So these hash marks here, it just means no curb cuts in those locations, but it's showing curb cut there. And so one of the things that do, that plat will do is identify approved access points on the plat. One of the things that staff reviewed extensively with the consultants for the applicant was there's a number of existing and proposed water lines, fire hydrants, and sanitary sewer lines that either were installed or will be installed privately, and they will be owned and maintained by FSC Global Supply Chain. So only those utility lines that are located within dedicated public easements will be considered public utility lines. And we'll have a note on the plat indicating that all water lines, fire hydrants, and sanitary sewer lines, storm sewer pipes, not located within dedicated easements are So the, as I noted, there's been some drainage issues, particularly from runoff coming from the west. And so the engineers are proposing to design a stormwater collection system that will utilize an underground concrete box, collect the stormwater runoff, and run it in a concrete box parallel to Arnold. It will discharge into some detention basins that will be created here. I think we have an image for that, don't we Dustin? I think there was a drawing that showed the two detention basins south of Arnold. Okay. There it is, right there. So just for your, this would be Centennial Road here. There's a creek channel that runs parallel to Centennial Road to the east, and this is Arnold Avenue going to the airport terminal. So there'll be detention basins here, and then they'll discharge across Centennial Road over to this creek area here on the other side. So the runoff will be detained here and then discharged at a controlled rate into that There are several major utility easements that are, that contain electrical gas and phone lines. Those are being retained, but a number of utility easements are being eliminated as part of this plat. So it's not real easy to see, but a lot of these easements that run through here that are shaded, those are ones that exist today that will be eliminated as part of this. And there's a number of water lines and sewer lines that will be demolished and removed because they're just in awkward locations. A large drainage easement's being dedicated for the concrete drainage pipe, and then there'll be two easements for the detention basins. Those are outside the plat. As far as the streets, no additional right-ofways being proposed. One thing we wanted to talk about, if you could go back to the original plat, Dustin? So this is Jumper Road, and this is property owned by UniFirst. And there was a proposal on the replat to vacate this part of Jumper right to here. One thing we wanted to point out was that there's a couple issues we've identified with that aspect of the plan. And so because this property right here, under state law, if it's vacated, this portion here would all revert back to the ownership of UniFirst and not to FS Global Supply Chain. Secondly, it can't be closed or vacated without the written consent of UniFirst. And then the third thing is that even if it is vacated and that part closed, the reason that this is here is that our subdivision regulations require that all public streets that dead end have to have a cul-de-sac or turnaround at the end of them. So one of the options that the applicant can consider is that this portion right here could be eliminated entirely as a public street, and there could be a side agreement reached with UniFirst to essentially just have a shared access driveway that's not a public street. That would preserve access. I think it shows up on the aerial photo, John. What they're trying to do is have enough of a street to access this parking and loading area here, but one option would be to eliminate it as a private, or a public street and just have it private. And another similar example of that, if you're familiar, where Claflin terminates at Ohio Street across from the Dillon Store, there's a little segment of road that you can go in, the north entrance into the Dillon site. And that looks like it's an extension of Claflin, but it's a private drive. And the south half is owned by Dillon's, and the north half is owned by the owner to the north on Kerwin. And so it provides access, but it's shared access for both Dillon's and for that other owner. And so one of the options would be to just eliminate this as a public street altogether, make it private, and just have the access shared between UniFirst and the Global Supply Chain. So as we noted, the other dedication is retaining the restricted access markings on Schilling Road and Centennial, except for existing access points. So we have reviewed that and are suggesting several conditions of approval. One, the first being what we just discussed, the configuration of Jumper Road extending west of Arnold shall be retained as is, or Jumper Road shall be converted to a private shared access easement in cooperation with UniFirst. The off-site drainage easements for the stormwater detention basins shall be dedicated by a separate instrument by the property owner. Since those aren't part of the plat, that has to be addressed separately. Then we're suggesting two notes be added to the plat. One is that all internal water lines, fire hydrants, and sanitary sewer lines within the subdivision are private lines owned and maintained by FSC Global Supply Chain, unless they're located within dedicated public utility easement shown on the plat. So the purpose of that note is just to clarify for the future reference that if there's a water line, and it's not specifically in one of the easements shown on this plat, then it is a private line, and it's owned and maintained by the property owner. And that just becomes important between the city as a maintenance responsibility and as a property owner, as a maintenance responsibility to set that out. And then the other note is that by virtue of this replat, all existing internal utility easements and street right-ofway are hereby vacated, except for utility easements and street right-ofway shown on this plat. So the purpose of that is to say, any roads, any easements that might have been on this property historically, they're all wiped out, and only the easements shown on this plat are valid. Again, that's to help for future reference. And then we have some technical corrections that we received from Register of Deeds and City Surveyor about the plat drawing and the plat certificates. One of the things you'll note in the, attached to the application is what we refer to as property owner authorizations. And so part of what that is, is that the Global Supply Chain has contracts to purchase some of the property currently that they haven't, they haven't closed on and taken title to. And so those properties and those owners have authorized to be included in the replat. It's just at this point in time, those properties have not been outright purchased by the SFC Global Supply Chain. So with that, I'd be happy to address any questions about the replat. Maybe if you could go back to this drawing, Dustin? Again, this is our, this is our point of reference, is that one of the goals of this replat is that we have all these internal lot lines down here. And so the purpose is eliminate this street, eliminate all these internal lot lines, and essentially make it a campus, except for this, this, and that lot. So with that, I'd be open to any questions that commissioners might have. We do have a representative of Global Supply Chain here. If you have questions, you want to refer to them. But you have in your packet the letter from the city engineer that reviewed their drainage study and calculations, but I think we didn't include it for Dustin to put on the screen, but it is in your packet. And if you look at the, at the drawings of the drainage in the packet, it's kind of amazing how much water, how far from west the water runoff comes from going through this property, trying to get to that little creek channel over on the east side of the property. The other thing, I don't think, Dustin, do you think you could go to the aerial photo and turn on the utility layers? One thing that's also in your packet, but I think is helpful, in addition to the internal lot lines, a number of these utilities, the water shows up in blue and the sewer in green. A lot of those were put in there for the base and for other reasons and are redundant and don't, don't serve a purpose, except to get in the way. So some of what's being done with this replat, a number of these lines will be removed out because they don't, they don't serve any purpose for the current use of the property. They were just there historically for the airbase and some of the airbase buildings. So with that, 1998 was kind of the first cleanup effort, and this is a further effort to try to create a campus. And it's not exactly apples to apples, but staff worked with Salina Regional Health Center, who had a similar situation, where the health center had acquired a number of properties, had streets like Seventh Street running through their campus. And we did a comprehensive campus replat to create a Salina Regional Health Center campus, instead of having a lot of individual residential lots and streets running through it. So this is not exactly the same, but it's the same concept, to eliminate internal lot lines, eliminate unused utility lines, and create a campus. So would be happy to answer any questions commissioners may have.
Did I understand you to say that Lot Three, Block 12, is not part of the replat?
This lot right here is owned by UniFirst Corporation, and it is not part of the replat.
Okay. So shouldn't they make the application for Jumper Road elimination rather than part of this replat?
They, whatever occurs with Jumper Road, and that's addressed in our first condition, and our first recommended condition is either Jumper Road stays as it is, as currently platted, or the Global Supply Chain can reach an arrangement with UniFirst Corporation to convert that section of Jumper Road to a private shared drive. And to do that, they would, they would have to consent to that. Absent their consent, then Jumper Road has to stay in the same configuration that it is.
Who owns the land where the detention basins would be? And who would maintain the detention basins?
The current owner, I refer to that as Love Box. I don't know if it's Love Box Corporation anymore. It's Pratt Properties is the owner of that property. And it's my understanding that that northern portion is going to be acquired by SFC Global Supply Chain, and then they will construct, own, and maintain those detention basins. And part of the, whether it was done through plat or done through separate instrument, one of the things that the drainage easement does is assigns the maintenance responsibility to the property owner and sets that out as part of the easement. And so generally, what the language says is that the property owner is responsible for maintaining the basin, and if they fail to do so, the city may go in and make repairs and then assess the cost back to the owners if they fail to maintain it.
Thank you.
We may, that may be something that the applicant would be better to address, but it was my understanding that this northern portion here was going to be acquired by SFC Global Supply Chain. If it's not, then the Pratt Properties, the owner of this, would be the one dedicating the basins. But I might let Mr. Clark address that for the applicant.
Any more questions for staff? Would the applicant like to come up and clarify that? Thank you.
That's Todd Clark in Shwan's, I'm the Vice President of Manufacturing. So Dean, you have to help refresh me here, but I think when we talked about the original basins, yes, we would acquire those. I can't recall the conversations around the maintenance thereof. I don't remember how that went. It's been a while. I'll have to go back to our engineering group and clarify that. I'll have to go back to our engineering group and clarify that.
What I've been working with, with Burns McDonald is the engineering group that they're working with, and what we discussed with them, and I've provided to them, the city has a template for offsite easements. The only thing, I guess, the thing that we were, is that you're understanding that FSC Global Supply Chain is going to be acquiring this property?
Yes.
And so, yeah, so they will, for your benefit, they don't own it now, but they will own it, and they'll be the owners who will dedicate and construct the pond and then maintain it.
Good.
All right. Any more questions for the applicant? I think we're set. Thank you very much.
So again, if you could go back to the, that shaded request area map, not this one, but the one that has the shading on it, Dustin. So as it relates to Mr. Baffa's question, what condition number one says is that because this is owned by UniFirst and it can't be altered or changed or vacated without their participation and consent, that jumper road has to stay the way it is, or SFC Global Supply Chain can get with them and with their concurrence, this entire street could disappear as a public street, and then there would just be a shared access road that would be owned half by UniFirst and half by the SFC Global Supply Chain. So the purpose of that condition is to respect the rights of UniFirst to maintain access to their property, but to also give SFC the opportunity to get with them and maybe negotiate something that would preserve that access, but also be beneficial to get rid of the So again, from the commission's standpoint, this is, it's not real complicated because it's just a campus that's bordered by four streets. The real complication for this was just the people that are most impacted are AT&amp;T and One Gas and Evergy and the city of Salina. This little segment right here has natural gas, electricity, water, sewer and a major AT&amp;T fiber optic line. So the replat is really important for those utilities, and so this has been provided to them for their review and comment. And so this, what you're seeing here reflects the product of their input, and that's something for you to take into consideration, but it's important for staff and the owners to work closely with the utility providers because one of the important aspects of plating is to make sure that you have utility easements in the right place because those are very important for the utilities that we kind of take for granted and rely on, which is electricity, gas, phone and water and sewer. So plating is an important part of making sure that property is served by those utilities.
So the shaded area is going to stay as easements?
The shaded area is going to be eliminated as easement and the clear areas. So here, this part here would be eliminated, but this clear part here would be retained. And it's, and so it's easier to see close up, but if you slide over to the, show a little bit more to the left, Dustin, this is just a note of a easement previously vacated. And so there's a number of things, this easement was previously vacated, there's other shaded areas that will be vacated, and it's just these areas here that are not shaded that are what will be retained. So this, what we will do when it actually gets recorded is we'll have all these eliminated off of their unrecorded version. So the only thing that will be left on the recorded plat will be the easements that are remaining in place. But this was helpful for the reviewers, it's helpful for you to just see the parts that are being eliminated because it shows how this property is crisscrossed with easements and things that make it difficult for it to be a campus. And so part of the efforts to make it a campus is to get rid of these internal easements and things that, because you can't build across easements, but if they're no longer easements or there's no longer utilities in them, then they're not an obstacle to construction.
Can you zoom in closer on the north part of jumper road? So is that an easement that will be coming out on the top part of that cul-de-sac?
So you're talking about this right here?
No, just, just straight up from the circle on the cul-de-sac. Is that an easement that goes straight up from there? If you go straight up?
This right here is an easement that will be retained, and it will go up here and around like that. And then these will be vacated by the plat.
Okay.
So these are all coming out. And there's, again, some of those things are water lines or things that date back to when the Air Force Base was there, and the water lines would be demolished and the
We ready for a motion?
I guess we should just for, just to cover our bases, make sure nobody from the public wants to make a comment, or there's, okay, or at least say it.
I'll move that we recommend to the city commission to approve the replat, application P 20-2/2A with the staff recommendations on page six.
Seconded.
It's been motioned and seconded. Those in favor, say aye.
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 So for your benefit, I think it's on the schedule, this will go before the city commission on the 24th of August. I will look at our, as far as preliminary discussion items, we don't have any items to discuss of upcoming matters at this time, other to say that we will, because there's only one meeting scheduled for September, that will be our business meeting and election of officers. One thing that's awkward about that is new board appointments are approved by the city commission on the 24th of August. And so there won't, there won't be a lot of time between the 24th and the first, but the first of September is your one and only September meeting. And so you'll have a long September respite after the first, but we just have to be ready for that. And this is Commissioner Good's last official meeting with you. She's completed her two three-year terms. And so we always, we always give our departing commissioners their opportunity to make any farewell remarks that they want to make about their time of service because this is her one and only chance before her term expires the end of August. So if there's anything you want to share with your commissioners about what you've learned or observed, feel free to do so.
I'd say I want to thank staff. I'd say you guys made it easy for us to be on here. Just, I think the staff reports are thorough and with all your experiences, you explain things easily and have a lot of examples from the past that you bring in to help us understand what's going on. So it's been a great six years. I've learned a lot and it's been good to learn the processes that it takes to, I mean, to have a better understanding of how things happen. And it's an experience I wish, you know, more people or the public would have because it's so easy to take things for granted, the way things are, or to wonder why, why there is a jog in the sidewalk or a jog in the streets and, you know, just things that historically we learned about. So it's been, it's been good. I am hoping for more diversity. I have tried to recruit or I've asked another woman to apply, so I hope she did. Yeah, I'd like to see more representation of our population, you know, so I'd like to see more diversity. But I really appreciate staff, all of you.
So from my understanding, as we go, Mr. Baffa, I believe according to my chart, you have one additional year on your term. If I recall, with Mr. Bernhardt, he was appointed to replace a member whose term had not yet expired and that he would be eligible for reappointment if he expresses interest. And Barb's term, her two terms have expired. Mr. Linkowitz, his term does not expire this year, so he carries over. Mr. Olson as well, as my understanding is Mr. Lang's term, he was filling in a unexpired term and I think indicated that he wasn't going to express interest in another term. So this might be Mr. Lang's meeting, last meeting as well. And then Mr. Gilmore's term carries over as well. So I think we'll have, in September, we'll have Mr. Baffa, we'll have, I think, Mr. Bernhardt expressed interest in getting appointed for a longer term. We'll have Mr. Linkowitz, Mr. Olson, and then Mr. Lang. This will be his final meeting, and then Mr. Gilmore. And so we'll see who gets appointed in August. And I have had a, one conversation with the person that you were, had visited with about interest, and so I believe that they're going to submit an expression of interest form, so.
I thought she seemed pretty interested, yeah.
So.
I'd keep you guys in line.
Somebody needs to.
Yeah. And of course, you're always welcome to come back and address this on a public forum. And the other thing is that there is, there's obviously other boards, committees, commissions and things that there's ways for people to get involved with. So just, just because you're no longer in the planning commission doesn't mean that there's not opportunities to be engaged, so.
Good point.
With that, I don't believe I have any other business for you other than to let you know that we'll have a meeting on the first, and that will be your annual business meeting, and you'll get to meet all the newly appointed members.
I have a few things, and I will make it real quick. I drove through Grand Prairie today and I saw five lots have been sold. And it's my understanding that there could only be 30 houses built there before the access road can be, can go, has to go in.
Okay, so I will, I guess that would be fair to me to update the commission on, if you did not, weren't aware of how the city commission had responded to several of those things. In the case of the Joe Hill application on Reynolds, the St. John's Ministry and School, and the case of Lowell School, the city commission approved all of those ordinances, rezoning those properties. And the second reading occurred last night, so the zoning change for those properties is all final. Also, last night, the city commission received an update on Grand Prairie, and one of the things that occurred was that the moratorium that was placed on any new homes above 35 expired, and the city commission did not choose to renew that. So there is, they took no action last night related to Grand Prairie other than to wait the outcome of the judicial appeal that had been filed by the applicant to Saline County District Court. So as far as the, what was discussed last night is the numerical limit on the number of homes in Phase 1 and 2 is 51, because that's the number of lots that are in Phase 1 and Phase 2. And currently, there are 31 homes that have been, had permits issued for them in Phases 1 and 2.
I was under the impression that 30 homes was the maximum number that could be built without an emergency access road.
30 is the maximum number you can have unless there is a provision in place for a future emergency access road. And there is a provision in place for a future emergency access road.
Okay. And what's happening with the pumpkin patch?
They are, they hired a contractor to go out and install public utilities and to construct the frontage road, the missing piece of the frontage road marketplace between the marketplace apartments and the commercial development to the south. But no building permits have been issued for any buildings in that development.
Somebody's spent a lot of money for vacant ground.
Well, they're, one of the things was, although it is suitable for commercial development, there were no utilities or roads connecting to the property. So one of the things they had to do to make it developable was to bring a water line across from the west side of Ninth Street and bring it over there because there was no water on the east side of Ninth Street. And then they had to make connections to the sanitary sewer system, construct their detention basin and construct marketplace. So the activity that's been seen over there to date is all relates to that, but there have not been any permits issued for any commercial buildings at this point.
Okay. And Town and Country is going to go north of Cloud on Ohio? What is Town and Country?
There is a vacant property at the corner of Kerwin in Ohio. You have, which I'm, it's, used to be Sterling House, now Brookdale Retirement Community that's one lot in, that lot on the corner, the southeast corner of Kerwin in Ohio. The Town and Country Vet Clinic is relocating from where they are to that, constructing a new facility at that location.
Vet clinic?
A veterinary clinic, yes.
And then if we ever get time, I would like to look at the peeling paint ordinance and tree stumps that, you know, somebody cuts down a tree and leaves a stump there, I think it's a hazard, could be.
I can tell you that the guy I use for stump removal is eight to nine weeks behind.
Really?
I have five stumps in my personal home that I'm waiting on removing. So maybe more of a manpower issue might be a.
Yeah, I'm not, I think there's a lot of, a lot of contractors and people in the service industry, whether it's pool maintenance or other things, that are very much behind. Because we, we have. Because we have issued more permits for backyard swimming pools and more permits for rear yard, covered patios and decks than any summer that I can ever remember. And so everyone is planning for their staycation, and they're putting in pools, and they're putting in shade structures, gazebos, pergolas, covered patios, swimming pools. There's a lot of that activity taking place, and a lot of those contractors have more business that they can keep up with.
If we get another $1,200, there'll be even more.
I guess if that's it, we can.
Adjourn.
Do a motion for adjournment?
Should we move?
I should.
Yeah, we need to let, we need to let Barb make her final motion.
I move, we adjourn.
Seconded.
Okay. We'll even let you use the gavel.
Yeah, please do. That's exactly why.
Do we have to say all in favor?
You do it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
Outstanding. Outstanding. The power coming through that gavel.
Right.